Good evening, everybody. We're pretty close to that hour. Thanks for your patience. We were trying to get a couple of pieces all gathered up for the meeting tonight and signing things that need to be signed. So would you join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you and welcome to our first meeting of board supervisors for 2014. We all had a chance to take a look at the minutes from our meeting of January 6th.
Yes, I'll move to your question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the minutes as presented stand.
I have one copy of the minutes.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
John Hadrick pointed out that under the appointments for scenic byways committee, that for the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission, it has to state that they are the representatives of that committee. Correct, John?
Yes, the appointment is to the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission and that term that was used in the appointment is, doesn't apply to the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway The term you used was Scenic Byways Commission and there is no such thing.
Was there, is there an official commission?
Was that the, how was I going to comment? There was a typing error, I thought.
Yes. Well, what the supervisors felt that they were doing was having the representatives that are appointed to both byways, meaning the Red Clay Valley Scenic Byway and the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway, be the representatives for both byways.
But it has to state you.
So, I mean, we could state that the Scenic Byways Commission is for the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway and the Red Clay Valley. Would that help correct it?
No, I don't believe the Red Clay Scenic Byway is a, just a coalition of interested parties. That's my understanding. I know they also have a board, but the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway has a commission and it's required in their bylaws that the townships appoint commissioners.
And what the supervisors were saying is that you and Margot Taylor would be appointed the commissioners for that byway.
Well, as long as the minutes say that we're...
And that you would also be appointed to the Red Clay Valley Scenic Byway as the commissioners for that.
And as I stated last April, I only have time to serve one and prefer to remain active with the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission.
John, there's some confusion. This is the first I've heard this. What we were hoping to accomplish was to create a committee, committee, not commission. This is my understanding of what we were doing. Creating a committee that would oversee all of the scenic byways, whatever they may be. So looking at this, it says scenic byways commission and it names you and Margot. So I'm a little bit confused by the distinction between my reference to a committee and what is a commissioner as this implies.
Can I clarify that problem? I'm guessing...
Well, can we solve this problem tonight is really ultimately my question. Because if we can't, then maybe we can do this without tying everybody else up in it and we'll do it separately. Is this something that we can solve tonight?
I would hope so.
Okay, well, go ahead then.
My request is that you appoint, I guess, Margot and me to the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission. That commission was created by the township, Kennet Township and six other townships probably four, five years ago. And every year they've appointed a commissioner. Except this year, they didn't. They created, as you say, a committee.
Okay, so we do have a committee. We've done that. And what this is dealing with is appointing the commissioners, which would be something related to but separate in title and presumably responsibility to as commissioners. And you've been, you and Margot have been appointed to be the commissioners.
I just ask, I would prefer if it said Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission because that's what I serve on. It's very formal, legal organization. You know, it's viewed as a municipality under the codes and everything else. I guess you don't have to resolve it tonight, you could do it next month, I suppose. But that's, you know, if you want to put a background on it.
Oh, okay. I thought we could simply leave it as the Scenic Byways Commission and put in parentheses that includes the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway and Red Clay Valley Scenic Byway, but John's saying he doesn't want to be on the Red Clay Valley.
Plus, they do not have a commission. I don't believe it.
Well, they suggested what we do. We have a committee and I think that we leave this open until we get this thing sorted out. I don't think we can sort it out here now.
You mean, one way would be to have the committee and then individuals are appointed to each of the commissions. You'd be appointed to the Route 52, Brandywine Valley.
Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway.
Commission, commission. Right? And then...
And that has to be an actual board.
But it doesn't have to be done tonight.
Except we have our organizational meeting of January 23rd.
Who's we?
The Scenic Byway Commission.
Okay, doesn't have to be done tonight.
It's up to you.
Here's Margaret.
Hmm?
Margaret is...
John, Margaret, sir.
You just got nominated. So, do you want to summarize? I mean, can we have the committee?
If John's saying he can't serve on the Red Clay Valley, then why don't we just revise his, say that Margot and John are both appointed to the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission and Margot is on the Red Clay Valley?
Right.
And then we, if you want, we can find another person for the Red Clay Valley to replace John.
Right. If we have two, I don't know how many. So the question is that on the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission, not committee, there's two appointees for the township. That's my understanding?
That's correct.
And so would you be willing to serve on that, Margaret?
Certainly. Is it like a bimonthly meetings job or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly? I think you can do that.
Plus, extra work.
So then you will remain appointed to both the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway and the Red Clay Valley Scenic Byway.
Put on, so we do this on any way. Anyway.
Do we have to do it at a meeting and hold everyone up or can we...
We don't have to do, we do have to do it at a meeting if you're going to change the name of the byway because it was in the minutes that it was just Scenic Byways Commission.
By the way, for a period last year, you had three representatives to the Red Clay Valley Scenic Byway.
Okay. Well, people are interested in that.
That is very, as I said, interested parties, but the commission is very formal. You know, there's voting and just like you have three board members, we have two representatives from each township.
All right.
All right, so where are we? What we want to do apparently is to, is to name Margot and John as commissioners to each of the two scenic byways.
No, we wouldn't name John to the Red Clay because he says he's not willing to serve on that.
But we'll name both to the Brandywine Valley.
And Margot.
To Red Clay. And then if there's someone else interested in the Red Clay Valley, we'll be step forward at some point. Right?
All right, so is that your motion?
That would be my motion.
To...
To revise the minutes to reflect that.
To reflect that. So, I mean, we have a committee that oversees it in terms of byways. And then with regards to the specific commissions, that both are on the Brandywine Valley and Margot will on the Red Clay.
Correct.
Well, yeah, thank you. That will expedite our meeting because it's an organizational meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. Go ahead and second to that motion. Thank you. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, adopted. Anything else?
No.
On that? Okay. Thank you, John, for calling this situation to our attention.
You're welcome.
Managers' report, please.
Okay, so the year-end financial report will be done at our February public meeting. The supervisors' work session will be February 5th, which is the first Wednesday of the month. And I wanted to let everybody know that the motorcycle zoning hearing board case that the zoning hearing board denied for retro tours, they have filed an appeal to the Court of Common Pleas to appeal the zoning hearing board's decision. That was just filed this week. And I've mentioned in a couple of meetings that there's a sidewalk project between Kennet Township and New Garden Township that will run along Cypress Street. And we're going, I'm going to a meeting in King of Pressure at the end of this month to discuss the grant process for that project. Right now, Kennet Township is on board and committed to do the project, which will run the sidewalks from the Borough Line through Kennet Township into New Garden Township, all the way down to the Giant McDonald Shop and Center intersection. And then it would also extend the sidewalks from the Penns Manor Development where they stopped into the Borough. New Garden Township has not committed to the project yet. They, I thought we would have an answer from their organizational meeting, but they said hopefully by the end of January they'll give us a decision if they are going to go forward with it or not.
Okay.
John?
I have a question on the work session. Do you have, have you established a procedure around that? Will you be making decisions at that meeting? In the past, that's been a confusing factor as to whether that, that there was a difference between the work session and like tonight's public meeting.
Well, there was originally an understanding that there would not be voting decisions at work sessions. That was sort of thrown out at some point as time went on and particularly towards the last six months of the last administration. So there really isn't anything in place. You're asking whether we're going to have that in place. And I, we haven't really made that decision. We haven't had a discussion about it in public or private. I think that there will need to be the potential for making decisions. Because the meetings will be in the evening and without time constraints, so it's open to everybody, just as this meeting is open to everybody, I'm less concerned about saying no decisions can be made. And I, and I expect that there will be need for decisions to be made. So from my perspective, I think that we're holding open the possibility of decisions being made at work sessions. Yeah?
I would like to encourage you to allow decisions to be made at both meetings.
Both are which?
Well, the work session and the normal session.
Well, tonight, board supervisors.
The board. Well, in fact, I would just classify them both as board meetings. And the reason I say that is we often get into situations where we need action by the board and to wait a whole another month is sometimes...
No, we've done that in the past. That's why we bent our rule.
I understand.
Because if we, where a time delay requires action.
Well, I brought it up. I think, I think it often will, particularly when you're dealing with contracts and other things, to wait a whole another month can sometimes be a real problem.
Well, and obviously from my answer, I agree with you. I think that the reasons why that, that constraint was in place no longer applies. So I think it's, it's open and I think that there will be a need to be able to make decisions. So I think that we will be doing that. But I appreciate clarifying that and we will be making a clear statement on that as we go along. As a matter of fact, are we in a position to make that clear statement now? Richard, do you have any thoughts about that?
Oh, I mean, just having been the latest member to join the board, it is sometimes a challenge to come twice a month if you don't know what the schedule is. So there may be larger meetings or smaller meetings and different types of decisions. So the meetings that are better attended, it'd be nicer to have larger issues voted on there. Those usually shouldn't be time constraint issues. But, so I think it's useful to have that ability at both meetings. But just from a resident point of view, if you know that the regular board supervisor meeting is one of the larger ones that takes place, that is, I think, useful to know.
Okay. Do you, are you opposed to taking enforceable action at a work session?
No.
Okay. Bob, do you have any...
I already said, we've had situations where we had to.
Okay. So I think it's clear that we will be acting at, at work sessions and board supervisors' meetings depending on what issues come before us.
And the work session, the agendas are now published ahead of time so people know what the structure is going to be.
Okay.
I have a question. Are, were you to act at workshop sessions? How does that square with your ideas of transparency, as was mentioned at the reorganization meeting, as far as getting these kinds of things out so people can see when a decision's going to be made? Would that be, would that go back to the communications committee or would it go through the website? I mean, how would that be handled?
It would be handled the way the meeting for tonight is, by having an agenda and letting people know what, by publicizing what the agenda is. And so the work session will also have an agenda and is publicized, it's also advertised, but it'll be on the website as well. So it will be clearly out in the open, whatever, whatever issues are coming up.
Good.
Yes, sir?
Hearing for retro tours, is that going, you didn't say hearing, you said an appeal. Is there going to be a hearing again? Are the residents in that neighborhood going to be advised that there has been an...
No, now it's appealed to the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay, so it goes to Chester County?
Correct.
So it's out of township's hands?
Correct. Well, our, the zoning hearing board solicitor will be involved, but it will be held, the hearing, if it comes to a hearing, will be held at the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay. Does the township represent the residents who are at the hearing or will they be subpoenaed? Will the witnesses be subpoenaed as they work for the hearings?
I don't think that the witnesses will be subpoenaed. We can ask our solicitor if we care how that will work.
I'm sorry, I was going to, once you got through to this section, I was going to...
She's right on. She's right on.
David Sanders, who is our, is our legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisa's spot on. All of the evidence in the case has been presented to the zoning hearing board. Zoning hearing board has made a decision and that decision has been appealed. At this point, there's no more testimony that's taken. What happens in county court will only be a legal argument based on the briefs that are written by the applicant and the zoning hearing board. So the township, the township is always a party at every zoning application. If the township wanted to get involved in this, it could get involved by sending the solicitor to support the decision of the zoning hearing board. However, that's what the solicitor to the zoning hearing board is doing. So it would really be duplicative of the legal services that you're already receiving from your zoning hearing board solicitor.
Okay. So everybody sits around with their fingers crossed?
Yes. You're putting, you're putting your faith in the zoning, in the zoning hearing board's decision, you know, the legal ability of that to stand up and the zoning hearing board solicitor who's going to go argue the case in front of the judge.
Okay. Thank you very much. Will that be clarified in a minute? I guess it will. Okay.
Yes, John? A question for the solicitor. If there are residents who obviously testified or were involved observing that zoning hearing who want to follow this in the court? The court announces when the session will be held?
The court will only give notice to the parties of record. Now, I wasn't at the zoning hearing and I don't know who the parties of record are. I don't know whether, obviously the applicant is a party of record. The zoning hearing board being the body that made the decision is a party of record. I don't know whether any residents received party status.
They did.
They did. If they received party status, they will be notified as the case goes on. If they receive party status, they'll receive a copy of the written decision. They should receive a copy of the appeal. If they haven't, that's a problem with the applicant, no, the applicant's attorney. Whoever represents the motorcycle folks has to send the copy of the appeal to all parties of record. As you say, if they were granted party status at the zoning hearing board, they should be receiving the appeal.
I guess the key is they will, through this notification, they will know when this court case is being discussed.
Only if they enter their appearance and petition the court to intervene in the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know, ask the counsel if the argument will be, the media will be allowed to attend.
The media?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it's an open court.
Fine then. Thank you.
Unless the judge bars the media. And I've never seen that happen in a zoning argument. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the managers' report? Okay. And next on my list was to introduce legal counsel. We've done that. Okay, so that takes us to old business. And the first thing on that is to revise the record policy.
Which I have right here.
I'm sorry?
I have it right here.
Which I probably wouldn't like.
Do you want me to read it? I have it right here.
Okay, go ahead.
The old township records policy, which lists how computers are handled, records retention, ID protection, building access, backup, personal information and financial records. In the financial records portion, that will be amended. It, the old policy said that the supervisors have access to all financial records except those that contain personal and health information. The new policy will say that the supervisors and township manager have access to all financial records and specific employees have access to certain areas of financial records. So I ask that the board consider adopting that revised policy.
Do I have a motion that I affect?
I think so.
No, I have just conflict. Maybe we have it first as a motion and then we can have discussion.
I'll move to it now.
Okay. Are you comfortable to second it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well, then I'll second it. Okay, so we have discussion.
Well, progress and identity sector are currently hot issues and I feel we should limit availability. That is, we should err on the side of caution, not put ourselves out where we could be subject to a challenge or something on that.
So what sort of information are you worried about? Being...
Well, the data has everything on everybody. Social Security numbers, health insurance, personal information.
Okay, so will personal information be protected when supervisors can look at financial records?
No, you will all see it.
You'll see what?
Personal information.
Such as?
Social Security numbers, health insurance information, that's it.
When you say health insurance information, what does that mean? Who the carrier is?
Yes. And what they, what policy they have.
Right, so there'd be no medical information?
No.
That we don't have medical?
No.
Well, I understand, but I, you know, right, but it's not a HIPAA compliance system. No one's been trained in HIPAA. I quite understand that discussion earlier and I just wanted to make sure it was clear now. Okay.
Lisa, can you tell us what steps the township takes to protect information at this point? And how will that change, if at all, by the adoption of this new regulation?
All the employees have been trained on ID theft protection, actually by Bob Listerman, who has an ID theft protection company. So all employees have been trained on that, on every aspect, whether it's handling somebody's tax bill with, if it could have their social security number on it because our per capita taxes used to have that on there. Credit card numbers for people. So they've all been trained on that. And their passwords, security information and with the new policy...
I was just going to say, I'd be happy to redo that, Tony. It's been a couple of years.
There might be new regulations.
Then I'll volunteer that time.
That was a lengthy process that we all went through for that. And then maybe the supervisors can be involved in that, in their training.
Certainly reasonable to do that.
But I think those are two separate issues. I'm just volunteering, it might be a good idea to revisit that, that's all.
Any, any other comments that you have in relation to my question, Lisa? I'm sorry, yes?
I'm AJ McCarty, I'm the fire chief for Long Fire. You provide workers' compensation insurance for us, but you don't provide any other compensation as far as the members. So when we have claims, we file our personal information. I guess my question is, we're not your employees, so are you going to be looking at our health insurance claims and what benefit you have of being able to see our information?
They will not see that. That is kept in a separate file. That's locked away.
But we're still part of the health insurance policy?
Right, but that's not in the financial records. That's a separate, that's totally separate. Kathy, well, our office handles all your workers' comp claims and they're kept totally separate. And on our workers' comp policy, you're not all listed on there individually. So all your information from your firefighters is kept locked.
Mr. Stevens, does this action bring to a conclusion, the right-to-know action that you brought against the township two years ago? Is this sort of a conclusionary aspect of that?
This has nothing to do with the right-to-know action. The right-to-know action was concluded nine months, six months ago, pending only that the information that the township is supposed to provide to me is provided to me. And this has nothing, this, the, the records, security policy has nothing to do with the right-to-know. It has to do with what are the, specifically, this has to do with what information supervisors in managing the township have a right to observe. And it becomes very difficult for supervisors to exercise their responsibilities in a, an effective and reasonable way if they can't take a look at the financial records of the township, which is the way it is right now. Now, there are people that get access to it, but it's by... Now, there are people that get access to it, but it's by, by will and by choice. But supervisors who are literally charged with running the township and being responsible for the finances of the township, we sign, we just finished signing the checkbook signature cards, it's our responsibility to do that, and yet, we supervisors have no idea other than what is prayed out for us. And we go forward in good faith because our staff is, is effective and honest and we trust them. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's a leap of faith when you've got a body folder on, because we can't see it and test it ourselves. And I think that we have an obligation to do that. I think that if supervisors went to a court of common pleas and said, "We can't get, take a look at the financial records," I really don't think that we'd have a problem getting a judge to say, "That's your responsibility, you have the right to do it." So to be told that we can't do it by some arbitrary records, um, security policy, I think is, is inappropriate. Without putting a lot of personal spin on it, I think it's inappropriate. Counsel, am I saying the right?
You're spot on, Jim. Absolutely, you are. You, the board is responsible for running this township, and you have to have access to especially the financial information that comes through the door, because otherwise, you are taking a leap of faith and you're, you're not living up to your fiduciary duty to properly run the township financially, and that's, that's paramount.
Yes, John?
Just want to clarify one thing a little bit. Say, if I made a request to see the financial records like you did, irregardless of this new policy you're adopting, I still could not have full access to the Quicken Books record, where I could see, besides all the financial stuff, people's social security numbers, marital status, and other protected information under the open records thing. Is that right, counsel?
That's true, no, that's correct.
So I couldn't do what you attempted to do some time ago, even under this new policy.
Well, you didn't attempt it when I did it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I couldn't do what you did.
You could do it just like I did it, and you would have as much weight to get what I got, as I got.
But you didn't get the social security numbers, I don't think.
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's the point I'm making, to, to indicate that there still is some protection for those enumerated items under the open records law.
But, but we're not talking open records law.
Right.
We're talking about the fiduciary responsibility of an elected official to run the township.
I'm responding to Chris's question. As, you know, how, how they, they do meet, there's an intersection there.
Hmm, okay.
The board will have free access to the data, but that doesn't mean everybody does, because there are a few protected elements.
That's why, that's why the policy says the board has access to everything.
The board's governed by its own records policy, and the public is governed by the open records.
Exactly.
Right to know.
Just to have clarified, what I'd be happy to help you with, again gratis, as a resident volunteer, is we probably need to put together an entire, um, security policy, revise what we had in place, and maybe specifically identify records, and who, who has access to that based on what we come to terms on. And I think you'll find it's going to be exactly what you're saying.
Well, certainly, um, I would think that through the, um, the VAC, um, that would be an appropriate thing to do, and certainly.
Good point. Why don't you just go ahead and charge the VAC, we can work on it together. I prefer that, actually.
You would? Okay, well, we can talk after to work out the details of what it is that you're suggesting and how we can make it happen.
Instead of being ad hoc, we'll do it through the VAC. That's the way to do it.
Okay. Any other questions about this?
We need a motion.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Um, Bob, have we, do you have anything further that you want to address on this?
No.
Okay. Um, Richard, how about you?
I have no other issue, points on this issue.
Okay. So the motion is to adopt the, um, the township records security policy, updated as January 8th, 2014. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Posed. Okay. Thank you.
On your next item, could I, are you going to read the two ordinances, briefly describe them, or do you want me to do that?
Why don't you go ahead and do that? Sounds a great idea.
The next item, the supervisors wanted to discuss the two ordinances that are in the ordinance book. They, they were adopted, one was adopted in 1995, it's ordinance 102, and this ordinance is the Kennet Township Land Trust Enabling Ordinance. And what this ordinance does, it allows the supervisors to enter into contracts with the Kennet Township Land Trust and to, um, fund the land trust financially if they choose to. The second ordinance is ordinance 190, and that ordinance permits the supervisors to create a new land, Kennet Town, uh, it's called the Kennet Land Conservancy. So it created the Kennet Land Conservancy, but it was, the Kennet Land Conservancy organization was never incorporated. So I briefly discussed both of these ordinance with our counsel before the meeting, and I explained to him that the supervisors have never gone forward with incorporating a Kennet Land Conservancy. The board, as I understand it, does plan possibly to enter into contracts with the Kennet Township Land Trust, and does plan, they may choose to financially support them in the future. And if that's the case, then he feels that we should keep ordinance 102 enacted, because it does permit you in the future to, like I said, create agreements and fund the land trust. Ordinance 190, since you are not going to create a new land trust, he felt you should repeal that ordinance. So that's, that's what the discussion was, supervisors weren't sure if they should keep either one of these ordinances in place. I know a couple of people thought that ordinance 102 created the land trust, but it did not. So if you were to remove ordinance 102, it doesn't disband the land trust. It, it is just there to, so the supervisors can enter into contracts and financially fund them if they choose to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, but we wouldn't need to have a specific enabling ordinance to hope to enter into contracts with other land trusts.
No.
Nor if 102 was present or not, we could still enter into contracts with the Kennet.
Yes.
Well, the Southern Chester County.
Yeah, that's, it's null and void, the Kennet Township Land Trust, it's, no longer exists.
I'm sorry, Gwen, can you speak up, please?
Uh, Gwen Lacy, Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County. Um, the Kennet Township Land Trust was changed or morphed into the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, so really that enabling statute is null and void.
I was going to point that out at some point, that the Kennet Township Land Trust is the same as the land trust of Southern Chester County.
The Land Conservancy for Southern Chester.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. TLC.
Well, actually, the articles, everything was amended, the bylaws, the articles, the name was changed, so really, um, it's null and void.
It is a separate organization, separate from the township?
Yes. It's its own separate 501(c)(3).
And has been so from its formation?
Has been so, yes.
And it was formed under the auspices or in relation to 102?
It was 102 as the enabling statute.
Right. Okay. And you have nothing to do with the 190?
No, that was a completely, that was actually to, to create its own land trust, separate and apart.
Well, I think you're.
Those are really good at this point. They don't do any harm, they don't do any, any good unless you want to start a new land trust. So I don't see what harm they're doing.
Well, um.
Clean slate would be nice.
I'm sorry?
I said a clean slate would be nice.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking just, you know, the few ordinances we have, the few we have to keep track of, and, you know.
Well, in order, if, if you decide to repeal ordinance 190, which was the advice of our counsel, we, we would need a vote from the supervisors to repeal that ordinance. And then we would create an ordinance to repeal it, and we would advertise that ordinance.
For your February 5th meeting?
So you have to create an ordinance?
You have to create an ordinance.
Only an ordinance can repeal an ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
You're making more paperwork for nothing, it's more than that.
It's, it's dead. Well, in light of Mr. Leffscom, Dr. Leffscom, um, perhaps 102 is also superfluous, in that the, first of all, it references a land trust that no longer exists, and secondly, that the board has the right to contract or support financially or provide professional services to any outside agency that it wants to, uh, and thus, you don't really need 102 to authorize you to do that. So it's probably ripe for repeal also.
Can we repeal both with one ordinance?
Yes.
We just have to reference both ordinances in there.
Correct.
I gave you, um, 10 mocks and handed me these papers that I gave you guys.
I was just going to call Ted.
This is relevant to the, all the time.
Yeah. And believe me, I don't.
Just one side.
I don't, uh, plan on belaboring this meeting with answers for all of these questions. I realize it's going to take time.
Would you give counsel a copy too, please?
Actually, can I give anybody a copy? First, let me commend you guys for making open space one of your opening issues in the new administration. Uh, it's very important in Kennet Township.
Thank you.
It has, you know, great support and great interest from one corner of the township to the other. That being said, uh, I think that there are a lot of interests on the part of residents of the township, particularly residents that may already have easements on their property, uh, that's going to, that creates some great sensitivity here. And I would really encourage the board to move more slowly in what you're considering right now. I don't see that there's a huge need to immediately repeal the ordinance, and some of those questions related to that are on this paper, and we can discuss them tonight if you'd like, or I'd be happy to work with the supervisors to investigate these questions and get answers to the questions. But, for instance, I, uh, I asked a, a friend of mine, uh, who is an expert in this area, can a land trust disappear if it has, if it holds the easements on properties? And, well.
So you keep talking to us, Ted, please, Gwen.
I'm not, go ahead.
Will you let me finish?
I will, thank you.
Honestly.
Talk to me.
Okay, absolutely. As far as I know, the Kennet Township Land Trust is the legal entity that exists on the deeds of many property owners in the county courthouse in Chester County as the holder of the easement.
And, but let me point out, as you, as you heard five minutes ago.
Right.
That entity has legally changed its name. It's still the same group, it's just changed its name. It's now the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County.
Okay, I, I hear that being said, but there are a lot of people in the township that would like to see exactly how that transpired and if it was all properly done, in, with the interest of the people who have easements on their properties. Um, so, you know, I mean, if you like, I can start asking these questions, uh, and we can start discussing them. I really don't want to go through all of that effort tonight.
Sure.
But I would really ask the board that they slow down and try to get the input of many interested parties before you start trying to rescind ordinances, create new ordinances, uh, you know, what, what's in the best interest of, of everyone in the township that has a great interest in open space? But I don't, I'm fearful that because it's such a hot topic, that we might move a little too quickly in some areas and perhaps not get the kind of support that we want from township residents who are interested in perhaps putting easements on their properties, but have a low level of confidence in how rapidly things are transpiring.
Um, and I, and I, um, I understand your concern, and I believe I do. Um, and in response to your statement, I want to, to reference the fact that no action to, um, to, um, get rid of either of these ordinances was going to be happening tonight. The most that was going to happen tonight was that a resolution be adopted to put the, on the agenda for the work session on the 5th of February, the question of whether to, um, to get rid of these two or either of these ordinances. So it would not be tonight. Uh, it would be in essentially two weeks, which would give people the opportunity to come in prepared to make a statement, ask their questions, and have the matter addressed. So that wouldn't be rushing, and it may turn out that there's not a need to make a decision at that time either, depending on what kind of questions may turn up. But the process goes forward, whether we vote in two weeks or two months is, is totally different from what we do tonight, but we are not going to adopt, um, an ordinance to, to get rid of either one of these tonight.
Right, I appreciate that. Uh, I understand that. Uh, to me, it seems like two weeks is not enough time. And the reason I would say that is if you look back into history, 102 is created in 1995. 190 was created.
Just 2010.
2010, three years ago. So there have been things in existence for a long time in the township, and a lot has transpired in the township regarding, uh, the acquisition of open space. A lot of divergent focuses have occurred in the last few years. Uh, I think that you should, you really owe it to the residents of the township to try to get a little better handle on what the open space goals of the township are, and what, uh, what groups you want to be affiliated with, uh, you know, and what people are, are handling the open space issue on behalf of the residents of the township. Um, I'm not, you know, everybody that's been involved may be the absolute best people possible to be involved, but I just think that there's been enough, kind of dichotomy or splitting of open space interest in the township over the last few years, that it would do us all a lot of good if we could collectively get together and move forward on open space in a, in just a little slower format.
Right. A couple of comments. The, the ordinance 190 is really in an irrelevancy under any circumstances, because it hasn't done anything except create, the potential of creating a new land trust.
Right.
That hasn't occurred yet, and so whether it exists or doesn't exist doesn't change anything. Secondly, the township does not own any conservancy easements, has never taken any conservancy easement.
Right.
So, um, the action of the township is an irrelevancy as well, because.
Oh, hardly.
No, wait a minute, please, Ted, I didn't interrupt you.
Okay.
Um, the, the township, the, the people that, um, are dealing with conservancies, the individuals, all chose their own conservancy entity with, with which to work, and so it's not just TLC, it, or, um, in, in prior language, uh, the Kennet Township Land Trust. It's not just them, although that entity has many, and Gwen wants to tell us at some point, she can tell us what, um, TLC is holding in the township, but there are many other conservancies that hold. But there are many other conservancies that hold easements in the township. Those are the entities that you're talking about as far as where is the money, where are the interests, what happened here, what happened there, in the township. Township hasn't done any of that. All we've done is facilitated the process with the, between the landowner and the conservancy to be holder.
Right.
And so, that issue is very different. So, what we do with these two ordinances, if anything, is irrelevant to the question. You're asking a very different question, which I believe, if you correct me, if I'm wrong, you're saying, let's look at the larger picture about where we're going and what we're doing with conservancies through the auspices of the township. And that's a perfectly legitimate question, but ain't got jacked to you with either one of these two ordinances, in my opinion.
Well, that may be true, but I would submit, what is the plan of the supervisors for the future related to the expenditures of open space monies? And when you said the township's involvement in the land trust is irrelevant, I would just submit that whatever one-half, 1% of the earned income tax that we as all, everyone in this room pays as taxpayers to the township, it's our money that's buying those easements. And so, that's township money that's going to fund those trusts. So, the township residents have a very much interest in exactly what's happening with these trusts. And that's why I still encourage the supervisors to just back off a little bit and consider all of the ramifications of what's happening. You know, one of my questions was, why is there a, and believe me, I'd love to spend $865,000 on some good open space, but why is that in the budget if there's nothing currently being considered for, no easements currently being considered for purchase? And, you know, it's okay to have a line item in a budget, but usually you put money in a budget because you intend to spend it. But if you have no idea what you're going to spend it on, then why is it there? Just simple questions. I'm just asking the board to get more on board with all of the township, all of the residents, the people from, of all shades, colors, sizes in the township who have an interest in open space, and let's try to move forward together. And I don't believe that the supervisors rescinding these ordinances right now is in the best interest of their image with all of the residents of the township as we move forward for open space, which we all want.
Right. No, and I think you've raised some issues that are useful. How's the township going to decide how to preserve open space? How's it going to prioritize? How's it going to tie it to trails? There's a lot of other questions that aren't pertinent to the consideration of ordinances. What you're seeing tonight is the first time we're having an open discussion about it. So, we're not rushing, we're starting the process of this incident, okay?
I love that, I love what you just said.
That's why we're here today.
But what I heard Scudder kind of telling me is setting me up for, but we're going to pass it two weeks from now anyway.
I didn't say that.
Well, that's...
Actually, he said the opposite. He said, we're going to advertise it for a possible vote in two weeks, and the board may decide not to vote to rescind it or not to vote in two weeks also.
Okay, all I can do is ask. I'm asking you to slow it down.
I wanted to point out though, that there is easements that they are working on, that's why they did budget the line, which I announced at the budget meeting, that they are working on two easements. For this year.
Gwen, did you have a question?
Sure, I mean, actually a couple of questions, but I also wanted to, I came because it was on the agenda tonight that the ordinances were being rescinded. And, but what I, that regardless, I mean, what is curious is some of the questions that you bring up, it definitely shows that there needs to be a better understanding of what's going on, because I don't want these circulated because there's a lot of misinformation here that could be, that could be interpreted and then now we know what happens with that. For example, number two, Kennet Land Trust maintains easements on numerous protected lands within the township that cannot be rescinded. Shouldn't these easements be transferred to another entity before any rescission can legally take place? Adveratives were filed, I believe in 2010, for every landowner of a conservation easement that it, for each one, thumbnail yours was filed as well for the name change from the Kennet Township Land Trust to the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County. Nothing's happened to those easements. They're just held by an entity that's also could be doing business as the Kennet Township Land Trust. Our official name is different. Nothing's happened. We're in a nationally accredited land trust. So, let me finish. So, number two, so that, and you're welcome to Chester County Recorder of Deeds, everything's been recorded.
Okay.
Number five, the Kennet Land Trust was created by ordinance 102, is still a legally bound entity. Who is on the board of the Kennet Land Trust? Who is currently in possession of paperwork and official documents of the trust and who is representing the trust as required by law? The Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County is now officially doing all of that and has been. It can also be, if you want to keep on the record, as doing business as the Kennet Township Land Trust. It's interchangeable. Number eight, shouldn't the BOS consider rehabilitating one of the existing conservation trusts and populate them with a board of new members untainted by the fog of the past open space controversies? Again, that goes back to, there is a legally nationally accredited land trust, the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, that is in operation and located, and you're welcome to come by anytime. And you're welcome to go on to any websites in the Chester County...
Are you talking to me or are you talking to Scott?
Yeah, because these are your questions. I mean, here, I'm sure he already knows this. I just, I just don't want to...
She's, she's talking to me, but she's thinking to everybody. She's answering the questions that you've raised.
I just don't want anybody to leave here with the idea that because of this 102 ordinance, I mean, we'd be happy to keep the ordinance, and if you'd love to fund us again, we lost all of our funding. We've, you know, we basically, we've rolled up our sleeves and started from scratch again. If you want to keep the ordinance and write in the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, and if you want to fund us again, we'd be happy to receive it. The thing is that we're now completely on our own and we are working with other townships, but we do, we are applying for grants to the township to leverage the state and county funds to ease more of Kennet Township. We have a lot of files of projects that have been gathering dust, and we're really excited to open those files and get going again.
And I think we're trying to allow that to happen. And so, these are the ordinances that are pertinent to it. And the question is, should we keep them? Should we change them? Should we get rid of them?
And the other, can I...
And that's why we're having this discussion.
Number eight is also, why is the $865,000 the line item of the $2,000 budget for open space? Because there's a dedicated open space in the township, you have to, I mean, that has to be, that funds your open space acquisitions. So, that's why it's in the budget. Every year, it should be in the budget.
Well...
As a taxpayer, I hope you want it in the budget, since you're paying for that.
You'll ever finish it, guys Ted.
And I'm sure there's other ones we could go through. I just, I just really want to be clear that there is a living, breathing, legal entity that holds easements, not just in Kennet, but was specifically in Kennet at one point. So, I just don't want there to be any misconceptions leaving tonight.
All right.
It's got a full active board.
I'm sorry, are you finished Gwen?
I guess so.
Thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off. You paused and I sort of jumped in. Yes, Tom?
When was the Kennet Township Land Trust dissolved, did you say?
It's actually, it's doing, the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, this name is still out there, but the entity's name was changed in 2010. Go on the Recorder of Deeds, everything's there. It's all been filed. The amended, the articles were amended, bylaws, affidavits were filed for every easement that was held by the Kennet, it was a name change.
But I haven't received any documentation of that effect.
Sure you have. You received them in 2010 with letters saying you're now the Land Conservancy...
I just went through my files, I could not find it.
Well, I'll send you another one, that every landowner received them. And Tom, your property is monitored every year, correct?
That's correct.
So, you know that there's an entity that holds your easement that is coming out there and doing what's meant to be done. Jeff Whittle, I mean, there's landowners in this room. I mean, you can't negate that an organization is there. We're there every year on your property and in touch with you when other things come up.
All my documentation says that my easement is held by the Kennet Township Land Trust.
There were letters sent out to every landowner. We even had a meeting of all the landowners.
All right, so let me, we're kind of going around circles on this issue. Your question, like Ted's, is important. Gwen has told us that the Kennet Township Land Trust has taken the legal steps to change its name to the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County. And she says that although everybody's already gotten them, if you don't have it or didn't get it for whatever reason, she will make it available. I think that's very important that she does that for, to the township as well, so that we can docu, we have documentation of that effect. But a change of a name does not cancel out a previous entity and substitute a new. It's, all it does is change the name. And so, the way you asked the question implied that the Kennet Land Trust was canceled and it wasn't as far as, she has told us and she'll document that for us. Correct?
Doing business as...
So, hold on Ted. We've done a lot of talking, and there is no motion on the floor yet. And that's not normally the way parliamentary procedures should work. So, even though we had the discussion, I'd like to, if there's not going to be a motion, then I, we don't need to talk about it anymore, there's no action to be taken. If we have a motion, then we have something to talk about and to act upon. So, with that in mind, does anybody have a motion to make?
I think, I mean, I think we're going to learn more about these at the next meeting. So, we don't take a vote now on these, do we?
If you want, if you want to rescind any, either one of the ordinances at the work session, you would need to take a vote now to create an ordinance to advertise to rescind it.
Okay.
If you don't do that, at the work session, you can discuss it further.
Right.
But you cannot rescind it.
I got it. Okay, thanks for your patience. So, the ordinance 190 creates a separate entity, which I don't see much purpose to, is my understanding, is that correct?
Correct.
And ordinance 102, for clarity, if for instance, if the Kennet Township Land Trust doesn't, its name is changed to the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County, does it, does it make a difference if it's in place or if its name is changed?
All this does is enable, ordinance number 102, as I understand it, enables the creation of a relationship between the township and a, an entity which was going to be created as a Kennet Land Trust.
But you don't need an ordinance to have that relationship.
Correct. So, whether we have either of these, whether we have 102 or not, doesn't change the fact that the Kennet Land Trust, now known as the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County, is in existence, holds numerous easements in the township, continues to do business in the township as well as other municipalities. And we can do business with that entity or not, as we choose to.
Right. And people that already have established land, land that's been conserved will not be at risk by if that ordinance is in place or not.
That's correct.
So, neither of the ordinances seem to serve much in the way of purpose. So, I think at the next meeting, we should consider an ordinance to rescind 190, and we can rescind or amend 102.
Okay, is that your motion?
That would be my motion.
Is it a second?
I'll second mine, okay. I don't see any point really. Both ordinances are moot at this point, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to...
To rescind both?
To rescind both.
Because if we're going, if you mentioned amending one, if we're going to amend one, that's different than rescinding it. So, it depends, the language...
I was going to suggest that if there's a chance that the Board of Supervisors takes a different action on the two ordinances, that there be two ordinances created, one to repeal 102 and one to repeal 190, and one or both of them could be enacted at the next meeting or discussed and put off to a future meeting. Or, you can decide that you don't want to repeal one of the two ordinances and that you want to amend it, in which case another ordinance will have to be created amending the ordinance that you want to amend.
But please understand that if our solicitor creates two ordinances to repeal these ordinances, it will be advertised promptly. So, that means that if you decided at the next meeting, you want to now amend one of the ordinances, those advertise, we have to re-advertise.
Depending on what the amendments, well, if an ordinance says you're going to repeal it and you decide not to repeal it, you want to amend it, that's a substantial change that has to be re-advertized.
Okay. And what happens if it's, for instance, just a name change?
If it's a name change, you're going to need an ordinance to amend ordinance 102 to change the name.
Regardless, the ordinances that he would be creating would say to rescind them. So, no matter what you do, you have to...
Right. So then we should have, that would be best, are separate ordinances?
That's right. Sure.
Yeah, why don't we consider them separately?
And the second...
Because we heard from the public that there are questions about each one separately.
This whole discussion has brought up two or three very simple, pertinent questions.
Can we, can we reduce this, please Ted? We'll get to public comment in a minute.
Okay.
All right, so you've agreed to do it, to amend your motion to have two separate motions, one to rescind 190 and one to rescind 102.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
My second, I agree to amend my second to conform with your amendment.
All right.
All right. Is there any further discussion here?
No, I still don't see a point, why we're spending all this time and money for this.
I understand.
Since you're both moved at this point anyhow.
All in favor?
Wasn't there a public discussion before the vote?
Yeah.
That's what you said a few minutes ago.
Sure, I'm sorry, I thought we had been doing that, but okay.
No, your discussion prompted a few more questions. I'm really, I'm...
Excuse me, John, did you have a question?
I do, I have a comment. I think the process you went through, which was, you know, the dial was spinning all around, illustrates that although there may be a technical issue that says these ordinances are kind of ineffective at this point, they don't mean much. The perception among the residents of Kennet Township is that the Kennet Land Trust ordinance, particularly 102, I don't think 190 means too much, but 102, which has been in existence since 1995, most people feel that that's the basis for all this open space and the things the township has contributed to. And it looks like on a technical basis, that doesn't really apply. But the perception is, when the residents see that these things are being summarily in short term being rescinded, it leads to a real confusion among the residents as to what is going on. Obviously, you guys don't understand clearly what's going on by your discussion. And now you're about to go forward with action to rescind them. I kind of like Ted's idea of going slow, educating people, that may take quite a while, as to why these ordinances don't mean anything, what happened to the Kennet Land Trust, it's now another name, it's still in effect protecting everything the way it always did. You know, that stuff has to be done very carefully so we don't create further confusion and misinformation. So, I encourage you to go slow on this, and I don't see a need to, if you advertise, you're going to rescind, that's going to dial that thing up further. People are going to say, what in the world's going on?
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Tom, did you have a question?
I agree with what he says. But a lot of the residents, when they heard that, they thought, what about the land trust? What's happened to it, this and that? There is a lot of confusion out there, it needs to be cleared up.
Okay. Ted, you had another comment?
Yeah, and it's pretty brief. I agree with Supervisor Hammacher that it's really a moot point. If 102's purpose was to enable the creation of the land trust, that happened, all well and good. That ordinance did its job. The purpose of the... and good, that ordinance did its job, the purpose of the ordinance has been fulfilled, but there's no need to rescind it. It's, that's all water under the bridge now. So, there's no need to rescind that ordinance. Why would you? If you want to do something else to recognize Southern Chester County, or the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County, that's all well and good, but there's no need to rescind 102. I think rescinding 190, you know, you're right, what, why not? There's no point to that. Now, unrelated, as I understand, because you just explained it to me, and, and it makes perfect sense, but still a question I would have for, that relates to Tom Nail, who, let's say, 30 years from now, Tom decides he wants to retire and go to Florida, and he's going to sell his property, and his, he comes to the closing table, and does his deed now reflect the name change from, and Gwen has gone on to become the chairman of the National Land Conservancy, and no one in this room is here anymore. What's going to happen if, it, it has his deed been updated to reflect the name change?
When the answer that...
Gwen, Gwen, he's talking.
Oh, by the way, that...
The answer is that all of, if, if, if the PLC did its job correctly, then all of those changes will be public record, they'll be reflected on a title report, they will be presented, and the clerk at the table will check it all off, all the paperwork will be there reflected, and there will be no problem. So...
That's all great.
So, it's all, and if they didn't do it correctly, then they have a serious problem to straighten out.
Right.
Whether it's 30 years or 30 minutes from now, they have a serious problem. But...
Would you mind asking them if they were...
They'll clarify it.
Check that out, or?
I think it's, it's pretty simple. It's already happened. These run with the land. An affidavit was filed for every single easement we held at that time citing the name change. It's on record. So, yes, we, and, and the other thing is, the 102 ordinance, the reason it was 1995, that is the year that the Kennet Township Land Trust was incorporated as a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Now, one could argue that this was rescinded already in 2008, when we were, left the township, lost all funding, no, the township did not, hadn't, hadn't done a project with us since then. That really, I mean, where were the residents then, when that was happening to the Kennet Township Land Trust, would be my question. John Hadrick just pointed out, you know, residents should know what's going on. Where were all the residents when that happened to the Kennet Township Land Trust? And we went through the hell that we went through for the past however many years? Just a question, to put it out there. So, I, we'd be happy to fill everybody in on what's happened since, and where we are now, and we're stronger than ever, and your easements are fine and protected.
I don't want to...
Thank you. Yeah, not you, Ted.
Okay. I just want to ask, do we know if the, if it's just a name change, does that mean that the EIN or TIN, whatever you operate under, that entity, is that, has that remained the same?
Everything is, the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, if you go on record, it can also be doing business as Kennet Township Land Trust.
But if they have the same federal, where the 503(c)(3) come from...
Yes, we have a 232781, yes.
If it's the same number, then there's been no change in the legal entity, as far as IRS is concerned.
She said it's the same tax ID number.
Same tax ID number.
I just want to make that, A and CPA.
I just wanted to thank you for your questions, because, you know, to, we want to try to start afresh, and start anew, as much as your comments were, but I'm trying to phrase it in a way that I'm coming in, in terms of looking at how we do land conservancy in Kennet Township. And these two ordinances are pertinent, so we should be looking at them, and do we need them or not? And I think you raised some valid questions. I was thinking of them together, and we're going to consider them separately at the next meeting. So, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
I just have a comment that might help with our circular minds and thinking, if it's of agreement of the board, that the solicitor writes a two-to-three sentence skinny on each of these particular ordinances, what it's for, what its benefit, or what, you know, something simple like that. So, we know, this is this, you know, so when discussion is being addressed for comment, it can be clearly identified what, which one it's pertaining to. Just might help with, since they've been joined together, they have, in this discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Comment, I actually happen to have, just by chance, because I was doing some review of it at the trustee board, Packet, I have the amended articles and everything right here, if anybody would like to see them after the meeting.
Thank you, Gwen.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion from the board? Okay. All in favor of the motion which has, which calls for the rescission by two separate ordinances, one for 102, and one for 190? That's, that's the motion.
Drafting and advertising of separate ordinances that would rescind those ordinances if enacted?
Correct. Thanks for filling in the spots.
But you're actually taking an action then at the next meeting? Because you've, you've already advertised and written the thing.
Well, we can tell you what, we can choose not to, we can do lots of things now.
But you've gone, you've taken every step except to file a boot.
Right. And...
I thought they all wanted discussion more.
Right. And they will, it will be open to public discussion at that time, as well as people writing to us with emails, and telephone calls, and however else people communicate with their, their public service. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. That takes care of old business. New business, fire company contracts.
I have the 2014 fire company contracts here. The first one's for Kennet Fire Company. The contract spells out the territory that Kennet Fire Company services, which is, the territory runs down Byrd Road for both fire companies. The contract will begin today, and it would end January 15, 2015. The township agrees that they'll pay the fire company $160,000 in quarterly payments for operating costs, and $130,000 in one lump sum for capital cost. We also state that any use in occupancy or permit that's issued in Kennet Fire Company territory, the fire company gets $180 for each residential occupancy permit, and $280 for commercial. It states that Kennet Fire Company will respond to all fire vehicle accident calls in the area west of the center of Byrd Road, and north of the center of Old Kennet Road, including the Route 1 corridor, northbound lane from Route 82 to Schoolhouse Road, and to assist Longwood Fire Company on fire rescue calls when requested or directed. They will also service the designated territory for all BLS calls, and transport for all ALS calls. The Route 41 corridor is serviced by Kennet Fire Company with mutual aid from Abendale Rescue. That's Kennet Fire Company's contract. The Longwood Fire Company contract, it again begins this evening, it would end January 15, 2015. It states that the township will pay Kennet, Longwood Fire Company $160,000 for operating costs and quarterly payments, and one lump sum of $650,000 in 2014 for a fire truck, and that's in lieu of capital contributions for the next five years, ending in 2018. Again, they would be entitled to the use in occupancy fee for any permits that are issued in Longwood Fire Company territory, and their territory is defined as the area east of the center of Byrd Road, and north of the center of Old Kennet Road, and the Route 1 southbound corridor from Schoolhouse Road to Route 82, and to assist Kennet Fire on fire rescue calls when requested or directed. Longwood Fire also serves for all ALS and BLS calls in their area. And they also provide ALS coverage for the remainder of the township with Kennet, Kennet Fire Company transporting. The Route 1, the Route 41 corridor is serviced by Kennet Fire, again, with Abendale Rescue, and if needed, Longwood is called to back up.
Have moved, we approve those contracts?
A second.
Any discussion? Yes?
Just want to make sure Night Gates was included in that territory? I know it is, but...
It's Kennet.
Yes, it's Kennet.
But I think the way you said Kennet Road...
You did, you said Old Kennet.
You said north of it, so, Night Gates is south of it. I just wanted to, maybe you might have to put a little appendage in there, including Night Gates or something.
Well, there's a map, and it shows it on there.
Okay. Just want to make sure we've covered our...
Yes.
Being fairly new, is this budget in line with past contracts?
Yes.
Just, just curious.
The, there was a study done by the Regional Planning some time ago that determined what township should be giving the fire company for operating costs, and so the five townships that participate in the Regional Planning Commission all came up with this two-tenths of a mill, and that's what the $160,000 equals. The capital contributions is separate, and the fire companies ask them on a year-by-year basis.
Thank you. One of the things that's unique about the contract is that we're in the process of working with, with Longwood to purchase a...
The fire truck.
The fire truck, and that's the reason why the yearly contributions for the capital jumped for five years, whatever the number was, to, to 2018. So, that was an unusual feature that hasn't happened in the, my knowledge, in the past. But other than that, this is, to the best of my knowledge, is a pretty traditional contract.
And the township normally, per the history, gives the fire companies approximately $150,000 for operating, or capital costs. That's where they came up with the five years that they wouldn't. And I know that for next year, Kennet Fire will be asking the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold on to your wallet.
Motion on the floor? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it's been motioned, seconded, agreed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright. We need a new business update on Stevens Gardens.
I don't know if everybody's aware of Stevens Gardens, but it's located on Route 52. It's a garden center that has been deteriorating the last few years. And most recently, last year, it caught a fire, and the, but it's still standing. Our engineer at the time, and the fire marshal, and our building inspector all determined that it's, the buildings are unsafe as they stand. We have been working with the property owner, and they agree that they would demolish the buildings that burned, and they would clean the property up, because right now, our fire marshal feels, our fire marshal shut the business down, because it is not safe for employees to be in there. And he is, he's concerned, because he doesn't feel that even if his volunteers go there to fight a fire, they'll be able to safely fight a fire. The, about eight months ago, we met with the property owners, we came up with a procedure on what to do, and what they, what steps they need to take to clean up the property, and to demolish the buildings, remove those buildings, and nothing has been done. So, we've met, myself, the building inspector, zoning officer, met with our council, and we discussed our options for the property. Not only is it eyesore for the residents, but it's very unsafe. So, the reason we put it on the agenda is because the one action item that we can take is we can let the property owner know that the township, if they don't clean it up within a certain period of time, whether that be two weeks, three weeks, the township will go in, demolish the buildings, remove them, and leave the property for the cost, which would be much more expensive to them than if they cleaned it up themselves. That's really our only option that we have left at this point, because the property owners claim they just can't clean it up right now. So, what we're here to ask the supervisors tonight is, would they be willing to commit to funding demolishing the buildings if the property owner doesn't follow through with doing it in a set period of time? And then we would leave the property. But if our council goes to the property owner and lets him know that they have two weeks to either show him a plan of what they're going to do within a reasonable time, or if they don't respond at all, then the township will take action, hire a contractor, and demolish the buildings, and remove the remains. In the meantime, prior to that action being taken, we would ask that we were, be permitted to get an estimate to do the work, because we have no idea how much that would cost.
Okay. Do we have a motion to do what Lisa's asked us to do?
Which she wants to, I move.
Which is, she, she would like the authority, she would like the authority to be able to...
Spend the money to demolish if necessary.
Spend the money to demolish if necessary.
So, move.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
But we don't know what that's going to be.
Right. And we would, we would need to make a specific resolution, I believe, we should make a specific resolution when we actually are faced with this decision. What we're being asked to do is to authorize Lisa and council to go to the, to the owners of Stevens, and give them an ultimatum, knowing that we are prepared, we have committed to support her if we have to carry that out.
Right. And that seems like a very reasonable thing to do. I mean, you tried over many months, the...
Years.
Years. The explosion, yeah, I remember hearing the explosion miles away.
Right.
And if things are not safe there, then they've not cleaned it up for whatever reason. I mean, there's a point in time where you need to say that this has to change.
The league, theoretically, gives us a bill to get the money back anyhow.
Well, not, it won't... Well, it was explained that it won't guarantee it, because it depends what type of sale that property...
Right, yeah, I know, I realize that.
But the fire marshal, I don't know how Longwood Fire feels, because they were there as well, but I knew that, that our fire marshal said that he will not allow his guys back in to rear that building if there's fire, because it is that unsafe.
Are they open now at all?
Well, they're, they are not supposed to be, but, so I...
Because they have a fresh line out there.
Yeah.
Well, that, that just illustrates the nature of the problem that needs to be addressed. Do I have a second to Bob's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, question?
AJ, AJ was going to say, sorry for...
Go ahead, AJ.
I appreciate the fact that you're doing this. I was at the last meeting, and we told the property owner that if it did catch on fire again, that we weren't coming off 52. We would shoot water from the ladder truck from the street, and give it a good shot. And that's not really our nature, but that place is such a hazard that I can't risk killing somebody for trash, to be quite frank. There were things that we told the property owner that day that had to be completed by the end of the month, and they're still not completed.
When, were you out there?
Say a year ago.
Yeah, it was over the summer, it was like June.
Okay.
I was, I was there with the zoning, the building inspector, and fire marshal. We usually do all this stuff together. And, I mean, we told them if it catches on fire, we're not coming to get them, because it's worse now than it did catch on fire. My problem is that, you know, you have a townhouse development behind it, and you have a pretty highly traveled road, right? It is a fire item, and, you know, the portion that they're not supposed to be in is just as dangerous as the portion that burnt down.
Oh, wow.
So, and that's the business that's still open. So, I, I mean, I would strongly encourage that your ultimatum is, this is your deadline, and then the next day, our track of boarders will be here. Nothing else seems to work.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask if there was a maximum upset that the township would be willing to spend on such an endeavor, in lieu of the fact, or in view of the fact, that the nature of this business involves chemical storage, fertilizer storage, it's likely that you can get into an environmental hazard situation very quickly. And if you initiate the work, and that is discovered, it's going to be your responsibility. And if you initiate the work and that is discovered, it's going to be your responsibility to resolve it. So I don't know to what extent any environmental surveys have been done by the owner or there's anything on record, but it just seems to me, in such a situation, to enter into it in an open-ended way may be a little bit irresponsible.
Does the fire company know, Chief?
Does the fire company have an answer for that?
I mean, there was a lot in the property that would have caught on fire. I mean, we didn't necessarily see toxic chemicals stored. They claim to be a natural preservist-type pond organization. My only comment to the question would be, it may cost you $1 billion to clean it up, but if one of my guys dies and you're on, I'm on your workers' comp, it's a drop in the bargain, aside from any other litigation.
Well, that, that's the reason we met with council to discuss this because not only are we concerned that if it catches on fire, it could damage the houses and the developments behind it or next to it, but the fact that our fire companies won't go on the property to fight the fire, and as AJ pointed out, we, we cover all their workers' comps, so we are responsible for all of them. And when they tell us, you know, they won't even send their firefighters in there, it's a problem. Now, in the meantime, we will get an estimate. I don't know how we'll get a true estimate because we won't be able to go inside.
Yeah, I mean, I think, it sounds like you tried to give them a lot of time.
We have.
You tried not to do this, and nothing's changed.
Why can't you get a warrant and go inside?
A what?
Why can't you go inside?
I don't think they asked the chief that.
It's not safe.
We have to get a search warrant.
That's what I'm saying, get a warrant and you probably could.
I wanted to thank you for your comment. We certainly are aware that, that there are serious hazards that need to be addressed, but you're calling it, our attention to it is, helps to reinforce it, so thank you. Yes?
That was my question too, about the environment.
Thank you. Yes, John?
There may be an occupied residence as part of this operation. We're not going to bulldoze that, I wouldn't think. So it's going to have to be done with some specifics so that we handle it properly.
Okay. Yes, question?
I mean, this is an naive question, but isn't there, aren't there entities at a higher level outside of just the township that can shut them down and post it and...
We have shut them down and posted.
Well, I mean, it isn't, I mean, there's, you have at the township level, but isn't there a higher entity as well if that's not working, that you can...
Unless they're violating some state...
That's what I mean, what state laws, federal laws are being violated.
Right, but the township is not, doesn't enforce those laws. The township enforces its own ordinance, etc.
Right.
So the answer to that question is, I don't think we know unless somebody who knows that type of thing comes to us and says, "We think there's a blank violation," then you can call that agency and they can come out and investigate. But you have to have an idea of what you're looking for.
So you could alert other agencies that there's issues? Because Chet McCabe had been working on this back in 2006. There's, there's a whole record of the problems out there. He was trying to shut it down then.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
The day after the fire, I had Labor Allen I down, the state prepared for it, and he said, "This is a township problem." Local government is strong government, and he said, "This is a township issue." They can obviously go through a court of appeals and a county police court, but this is a municipality.
Okay. Ted?
Perhaps the concept of getting a warrant to go investigate the site prior to any demolition might give the township an opportunity to gather some samples of potential hazardous waste that the township could then make some other federal or state agency aware of so that should that happen, then they could be brought into the demolition process so the township wouldn't be forced to underwrite the, the cost of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
All this was done, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
More than, and basically every agency said, "There's nothing running down the street there. This is the township's house building, and that's where we're at with this, and a lot of reasons we're going these steps."
Okay. Any other comments? I'll call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Although this is a little bit out of, out of the order, we've already signed them. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
You have, you have other things on there yet?
I'm sorry?
We have other things. We have other things without listing.
I know we do. I'm just asking for a motion.
I move we pay the bills.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Road work, current activities. Who's in, in that one?
I have it.
Okay.
This is a road report for a month of December into January. The sign work was done around the township, replacing the sign, the wooden signs as we are continuing with the high reflective signs. We finished up odd jobs at Penn's Manor, including laying out the parking spaces there that the contractor didn't do. The project in Penn's Manor is almost complete. The streetlights are up. They're supposed to be activated tomorrow, so we'll see if they turn on. There's some parking curbs that we're waiting for the contractor to deliver, and that, and then that will complete the job. The company who was completing the job just went out of business. So I, I'm not sure if we will get the parking curbs, and we hope that the streetlights that cost $90,000 work. But we are holding money for those, for the project, so we have about $90,000 that we're holding right now. The road crew salted cloud during the snowstorms and the ice and freezing rain. They ordered and received salt and antiscidants to replace the amount used. They've used a lot of salt because of the ice, and they suspect there will be a lot of snow in February. The equipment was washed and serviced after every storm. Several trees were cleaned up after falling during the storms. A study was done for the mid-block crosswalk on South Street at the Herb Pennock Park so that the trails that are on the Herb Pennock Park can cross over by the sewer plant from the borough. The signs were ordered and installed for the crosswalk. The intersection of Byrd and Hillendale Roads will have trees removed on the bank. The property owner did finally give us permission to remove the trees to create a better site distance. The township will remove, I think it's a total of nine trees at the township clause. And then we have to restore the bank back to the way it was and plant, trees will be planted back further away from the site distance. The work will begin as soon as the weather permits.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are you going to advise on the extensions?
We have two extensions, Mr. Chairman. Hand property until May 2nd, and speaking until April 19th. I move we approve both extensions.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, that's our agenda. We have remaining any further public comment? It's been sort of a, a rolling give or take all the way, so...
I think everybody's ready to go now.
I just got a quick question.
Mr. Bob?
What happened, what happened exactly with the home at Hillendale and Creek as far as there was fire damage this morning, and is that not occupable anymore?
It is not.
No.
It, not only is it, they say that the house was destroyed, but there were three families living in the house.
Anybody hurt?
No.
Thank God.
We're not sure of the cause of the fire yet. They're still doing investigation on that.
There was, in response to that, there was a suggestion that that single-family home actually held three large families. As most of you know, we have a rental ordinance that is pending. This is the second fire in the last two weeks, and it is dealing with, with non-owner-occupied or more than owner-occupied property, as well as several trailers, I believe, that were occupied with families that were in abhorrent health conditions that the township may or may not have known about. I commented about this in my statement of condition a week and a half ago. There is a need to address the problem of rental occupancy properties in the township. And so I've asked that it be placed on the, to initiate the discussion, to put that subject on the agenda for the work session on February 5th. So that's, that's going to go forward. In addition, we have at least one prosecution pending on the firearms ordinance that is currently pending in front of Judge Misono's courtroom. And as a consequence, I've heard from some of the interested parties, and I'm going to, I've suggested that they attend the next work session because we ought to be talking about the fire ordinances, the firearms ordinance as well. So it sounds like it's going to be a pretty busy agenda for the next work session. Whether we can finish it all up or not, I don't know. But so far, we're going to start talking about, about conservancy issues, we're going to talk about rental apart of properties, and we're going to talk about firearms, and whatever else may turn up in the meantime. So Bob's question sort of got me going. I wanted to let everybody know that this was coming. Ted?
If there's some small, tiny back burner that the supervisors could find to put this subject on, when I first walked in the room this evening, I was speaking with a couple of other long-term township residents who also kind of agreed that there's a property in the township that is, I think of historic interest, and it's kind of in a not, a pretty kind of sad state of disrepair, and I'm talking about the Grange at Glen Greenwood and Hillendale. And I have no idea what the actual disposition is of that property, but it would be a great thing to preserve that in some way. My first recollection of it was at an election 30 years ago...
I was there too.
Where I was helping a candidate who was running for election in this area.
It's privately owned now, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I know. I have no idea, is there anything the township can do to talk to the property owner, maybe consider buying the property someday? I, I have no idea, but it just, I'm interested in it. I'm sure a lot of other people are too.
We have talked to the property owner. We have been able, for the past few years, to get him to clean it up, believe it or not. The problem is, just like with the pines home, now we may get a different opinion when I bring this up to our new council, but we've previously been told that there, and our building inspector feels this way, that we cannot make them do anything other than keep the home secure. So even with the pines home, with the, with the windows that are torn out, we've been told that there's nothing in the property maintenance code that we can do as long as they have the windows secure and boarded up. Because we've been trying to do something with the pines as well, and the Grange is the same issue, but we're going to work on that to try to address it. The other thing is, at the April PSATs convention, which is Pennsylvania State Association of Township Officials, Scudder is attending an all-day course on what to do for historic homes and how to enforce that they remain intact and, you know, so hopefully we'll learn something from that.
Well, just so you know, as a very, very conservative, fiscally-minded voter, I support putting money towards trying to resurrect and maintain the Grange.
Okay.
It's just a nice problem.
You, you certainly have, have touched a sensitive nerve because I, other people have joined in. And, and I'm interested in knowing, Lisa, whether the Historic Commission has looked into the Grange and its historic value.
Okay, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay. Was there a question back?
I was just going to ask, but I could find out later. Is there a draft ordinance on the rental property?
Yes.
Okay. Is it on the website?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
And there, it's currently in review with the Planning Commission.
Thanks.
And along with the gun ordinance, the gun ordinance was adopted, and the Planning Commission's currently reviewing it to see if there's further changes needed. The rental ordinance has not been adopted, and we desperately need it adopted.
I suspect it's going to go forward.
You know what? It's fine.
Catch me later.
I don't want to keep doing that. I'm sure the online ordinance will answer my questions.
Okay. All right. Yes?
Very briefly, you brought up the Case property at a work session about a month ago. This was prior to the new solicitor coming on board. Is that under review, the way that was presented to the Planning Commission? I noticed the for-sale signs went down the next day.
It, it is under review. We, we just sent our new solicitor all the information, the subdivision plan, the deeds, everything, so we just sent it to him for review.
Okay, does this come back, goes back to the very beginning now and it starts over?
No, we just sent it to him to get his opinion because we had an opinion from our previous legal counsel.
I'm aware of that, yes.
So we've been going with his opinion. Now we've sent it to our new legal counsel to get his opinion, so I don't know where it will go.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Steve? Multa gazi, senor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Sorry, I wanted to...